Good evening, councillors. We're all on our own tonight, so can I just ask you to remember your telephones too silent or too off? And let's move on to the main business. The minutes of the meeting that took place on the 3rd of August have been on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content I sign those as a true record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillors Hodge, Pritchard, and apologies on my fluffy agenda, and councillor Hill as well, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. And declarations of interest, Emma?
None received before the meeting, but I believe Farnham Town councillors would declare a non-perpetual interest. Thank you.
Thank you. And questions from members of the public? Have we had any, Emma?
None received, chairman.
And moving on to relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting. Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I've just got a couple of points to update members on. Be aware that we're moving through with the draft local plan, sort of give a general update to the last committee. But I just want to pick up on, page 14 of your agenda, we talk about weight that's to be given to the local plan and the neighbourhood plan. Just want to pick up on that, because we'd be aware that the Wavely Lane public inquiry has been taking place. And at that inquiry, the evidence that is being given is that a significant amount of weight can be given to our emerging local plan. So in the agenda, it was published close to that, it picks up that only limited weight, but the advice from council, moving forward, that we can give a significant amount of weight to the emerging policies, as I say, in the local plan and the neighbourhood plan. So it really picks up, just a sort of verbal update to what's set out in your report, that we can be looking forward and moving forward to weights where relevant in decision-making processes. It will obviously continue to increase as we follow the consultation phase and see that through, and then we consider the level of objection that comes up against specific policies. But it's just to make members aware that we can start giving a bit more weight to those local plan positions, and that's contrary to some advice we've given to members before, based on what council has provided us with. The second point I'll just pick up on is, sort of in terms of policy C2, which is our countryside policy, it's not relevant for tonight, but it's an important update, just to pick up. You'd be aware that last month's committee with an update was advising that council can now demonstrate housing land supply position to meet the identified requirement for the borough. This means that policies such as C2, which restrict housing, the supply of housing, can now be given greater weight in determination of planning application, similar to the emerging plan. However, full weight cannot be given to such policies, as these policies protect countryside for its own sake, which is different, whereas the MPPF and the emerging local plan talks about protection of the intrinsic character and the beauty of the countryside. So it just doesn't give you wholesale protection of less attractive parts of the countryside that might fall out of a settlement area. As such, whilst the council can demonstrate housing land supply, this means that development that is otherwise considered as acceptable, that could be found outside a defined settlement boundary, can still be considered acceptable, subject to all the other considerations, and particularly the test of harm to intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. Happy to take any comments on that, but hopefully that's useful. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Williamson.
Thanks, chairman. Yeah, it was just on the first point, on the neighbourhood plan and the local plan. Just clarification, really. You said that significant weight can be given, and then you said a bit more weight. Which is it?
Apologies. Yes, so, yes, we previously advised that limited weight could be given to it formally. After council advice, significant weight can now be applied, based on the advice we've taken. That's the evidence we're providing at the inquiry. The inspector will obviously consider that, but that's the position of the council at this time. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much, indeed, chairman. What you've just updated us on are two very significant points. And we did agree, I thought, some time ago, that we would get these points in writing so that every single councillor actually received them, rather than a verbal update. So we do need, if the officers, Mr Cleveland would send out the advice in writing to every councillor, because I think those two pieces of advice are quite significant.
I think the committee's secretary will take that on. Councillor Frost. Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. On the point of the C2 clause, it's relevant to an inspector's response, as summarized on page 7. And one of the appeal inspectors who says, in relation to the French and Vale, which was dismissed. The MPPF states that the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside are to be recognised, rather than protected, for their own sake, and there is no conflict with this principle. In other words, having recognised the beauty of the countryside and acknowledged it, you then perceive to destroy it. Am I incorrect in my interpretation of that?
Ultimately, the impact on the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside will be a matter of judgement for members to determine planning applications. An inspector might consider a piece of countryside to not be of particular landscape value, in which case development may be acceptable, in the same way that you may well find certain pieces of countryside for development not to be harmful to them. But that is a matter of judgement.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to item 6, Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area. Peter.
Apologies.
Sorry. Wrong. Appeals first, sorry. Louise, all yours again.
Thank you, chairman. The first appeal that obviously councillor Fraser has just referred to was on French and Vale, and this was an outline application for up to 46 dwellings. This was refused under delegated authority, due to the harm to the landscape and countryside, the impact upon flood risk, the failure to enter into a legal agreement to secure highways contributions and infrastructure contributions, the impact to protected species, the failure to provide affordable housing, and the failure to provide an appropriate housing mix which meets the needs of the borough. During the course of the appeal, the opponents increased the affordable housing offer and signed a legal agreement in relation to highways improvements and infrastructure contributions. The inspector concluded the remaining issues, the shortfall in housing supply should be given significant weight, and the shortfall should be delivered over a five-year period. He concluded that the proposal is located in a sustainable location, and there would be limited impact to the landscape due to its world trade setting. He concluded that the proposal failed the flood risk sequential test, and the opponents had excluded sites from their sequential test that could reasonably come forward within the planned period. Therefore, they had not avoided development in areas at risk of flooding. Furthermore, he concluded that the development did not provide an appropriate housing mix. He concluded that the benefits of the scheme would not outweigh the harm, and dismissed that appeal. The next appeal was between 7 and 9 Pine Ridge Drive, and this was for a variation to an approved dwelling to allow amended foundations to lower into the landscape. And this was refused by committee due to the impact on the ASEQ, particularly due to the loss of trees and erosion of the semi-rural character. And the inspector disagreed with the council and allowed this appeal. The third appeal, at Free Romwick cottages on Romwick Lane in Farnham, this was for the erection of a first-floor side extension. This was refused due to the harm on the rural character of the area and the countryside and AGLV. And on this one, the inspector agreed with the council and dismissed the appeal. And the final appeal was at Green End Cottage on Manly Bridge Road, and this was for the erection of a garage. This was refused due to the character and appearance of the area. However, the inspector disagreed with the council's view and thought it was acceptable in terms of the street scene and the appearance in the surrounding area, and allowed this appeal. Thank you, members, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from members? If no, we'll, thank you, Louise, we'll move on to what is now on the other piece of paper, item 7, Thames Basin Heathland Special Protection Area. Peter, do you wish to make any further comment?
Thank you, chairman. Nothing to add, this is just a report for noting. Thank you, chairman.
Noted. Councillor Fraser.
I see there's four elegant passages describing the history of the Sang up to July 16. And then, at the bottom of the page and over the page, unnumbered number four, there is this wild increase in houses and relation, with no explanation. I think it deserves a paragraph, an explanation in future months, to explain to us the actions of the executive in agonising over the copious amounts of consultation material we had to go through in order to establish the agreed avoidance strategy, and the differences perhaps in that strategy from the draft strategy that we all have. It deserves, it deserves explanation of their contribution, there's none there yet. Can I ask that it be improved and included next time?
Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, if that clarification will help, members, we're happy to add a bit more to that part of the agenda. That's not a problem.
Thank you very much, indeed. Applications for planning permission, should site visits be necessary, they'll be held on Tuesday, the 27th of September, at a time to be agreed. Moving on to item A2, WA 2016 1746, change of use of existing workshop, class B1C, to former dwelling with associated garden and creation of wildlife area beyond the proposed garden, as amended by the ecological report received on the 6th of April 2016, at the workshop, Weyden Mill Lane, Farnham, GU97QL. Ryan, it's all yours, please, to introduce.
Thank you, chairman. So we'll start with the location plan. The application site is located to the south of Bishop's Meadow, towards the end of Weyden Mill Lane, which is an unmade access track leading from Red Lion Lane. The Farnham bypass runs parallel to the lane, to the south of the site. Here we have the aerial photograph of the site. The site comprises a single-storey building which is currently unoccupied, but was previously used as a commercial workshop, use class B1C. Residential properties are situated within close proximity to the west and east of the application site. The site is surrounded by mature vegetation. Here are some site photographs. To the top left, the photograph shows the existing principal elevation of the building. To the top right, this photograph is taken just off the site from Weyden Mill Lane. Here you can see the lane itself to the right, the site access to the left of the photograph, and mature vegetation between, along the riverbanks. The bottom-left photograph is taken of the site when viewed from Bishop's Meadow. The bottom-right photograph is, again, taken from Weyden Mill Lane, and here you can see the application site through the mature vegetation, which, as I said, runs along the riverbanks. These are the existing plans which demonstrate the workshop area, integral garage, and existing penetrations of the property. The proposed floor plans demonstrate the conversion of the existing building to provide bedrooms, living areas, and to retain the integral garage. The proposed elevational plans demonstrate the insertion of new windows on the north, west, and southeast elevations, the side elevation to the left of the screen there, and the replacement openings. So in conclusion, the proposal is considered to be in an appropriate location. It would be acceptable in terms of design and impact on the conservation area, and would have an acceptable impact on the surrounding neighbours. In addition, highway implications would also be acceptable. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, Farnham green envelope, loss of commercial uses, highways and parking, archaeology, biodiversity, impact on the riverbank and flooding, and the impacts on the SPAs. The matters of judgement are design and impact on visual amenity, and the appearance of the conservation area, impact on ASVI, impact on SNCI, impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and amenity space. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Members, would you accept my apologies? I don't think you all know Ryan. Ryan Snow is a member of the Southern and Western Planning Team. Might not all have met him. So I apologise, Ryan, for not introducing you fully earlier on.
Was.
Was, yes. Yeah. So my apologies. Councillor Williamson.
Thanks very much, chairman. This is in my ward, but at the absolute extreme edge of it. But I have walked along there quite a number of occasions. I'm surprised there's none of the residents here tonight, because they have, the near residents have certainly objected quite strongly, basically on three grounds. One is the access on the lane, which is a dirt track, and from personal experience, I know the issues of living on a dirt track, and the issues that they specifically raise about the maintenance of that track. So I have some questions on that, which is, who owns the track? Who maintains it? I mean, the residents have said that they maintain it, and specifically that the owner of this property, as, over the period that he's owned it, not maintained it at all. The other issues were the sort of incremental increase in the scale of the property, i.e. could they put a planning application in to enlarge it? And I think I read in the officer's report that you would probably limit that and ensure that that didn't happen. So that would cover that objection. And then, they had a problem with the screening. I mean, this is a very secluded area, you know, like I said, I walked down there, it's very nice, it's rural, and they're concerned that that cover, that tree cover, could be removed, and that, I guess, their privacy could be lost. I mean, those were their objections. I'm going to say, when we looked at this at the town council, my concern was one of flood risk. So when I got the officer's report, rather than platter it all, which I did this morning, I just looked in the first instance at the impact on the riverbank and the flooding issues, which are on page 25. And I was confused. In fact, I'm still confused. The second paragraph, it says it lies within flood zone 2, flood zone 3, as defined on the environmental agency's flood map, and is 20 metres from the river, which it clearly is. It then goes on to say, it is not necessary to perform a sequential test, as the MPPG 2014 set out that the sequential tests need to be applied to the applications for change of use. I presume that that should be the exact opposite. Right, okay. Yeah. Anyway, I pressed on. A flood risk assessment has been submitted as part of this application, which recommends mitigation measures including, blank. Blank, 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 blank. It then goes on to say what the environmental agency is. So I was going, not to give up, I printed off the whole 28 pages of it, destroyed another rainforest, but I printed off the flood risk assessment. I shouldn't have bothered, really. I shouldn't have bothered, because I've read it before. The only thing that seems to change in it is the name of the place, and the maps at the back. But in summary, I mean, you could put it in one page. It says it is going to flood, it's going to flood more than 1 in 100, 1% of 1 in 100 years, more than, and it does flood. They're going to build it up so that it's 1.2 metres above the ground level, and they're going to insist that there is an access from it, which is this lane, which we don't know who is going to maintain. So it's going to flood, you need to have an emergency to get people out when it does flood, on a lane which is a bit dodgy. I haven't really got a problem with the development of this. I think, it's the right thing, I just think that this hasn't been done properly. You know, there's an absolute lack of attention to detail. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councillor Frost.
That was a surprise. Thank you. This actually is within my division. And I think it's a difficult one. As far as I'm concerned, this hasn't been used as property, and certainly I've read the section 106 requirements about vehicles. Now, they're going to have to be lifted if you're going to make this a house, because there's going to be at least two cars, and according to this, section 106 information, only one car is allowed. So there are some difficulties. Personally, I think we should go and have a look at it, because I think we need, I mean, I haven't been aware of it flooding. I've been aware of fields rounders flooding, like the ones on the A31 and Requiem Road, etc. They all flood, although people tell me it's only a puddle, but not when I've been there. But I'm not aware of this particular area flooding. Does it?
It spills on the other side.
It spills, that's not the same as flooding. So it did seem to me that we could put some conditions in about retaining the hedging and the trees, so that it still retains its sylvan-like appearance. And we can put a condition in, once we find out who owns the lane, about maintenance of the lane, and that can be part of the planning application. So, for example, whoever owns the house has to maintain the lane. But I think it might be useful just to have a look at this, because if it wasn't suitable as a storage place, and for economic development, etc., because we'll be losing that, I'm not sure it would be suitable for a house, and everything that is involved there. And it does say in the report that we're not desperate for the house, it won't affect us if we don't have it. But I would propose a site visit on this one.
Councillor Coburn.
Yes, I actually have no problem whatsoever with this. I don't like it, I think it's quite unattractive, but it's there. And all they're doing is some internal changes to turn it into residential accommodation. I mean, it's happening up and down everywhere. I mean, I can understand points about the lane, but then, you know, most of us live in areas where there's lanes, and there are difficulties. So, you know, I really don't see this as an issue. Any conditions certainly to maintain the screening would be necessary, because I think the whole point about this is that it's not a thing of beauty, but it is nestled in the trees, and offends nobody as it stands at the moment. And as I say, all they're intending to do is internal, and change doors and windows, which you would have to do, obviously, to make it suitable for residential. So I have to say, I don't have a problem with this, I'm quite surprised.
Sorry, Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, chairman. There is a matter of record on page 15, the environment agency's first response was to say, no, no. And then they went away for three and a half months. And clearly that report was produced during that period, and they've come back and said, well, yes, maybe. There's no mention in this agenda of the 1.2 metre burn that's suggested in the report. That's going to make quite a difference to the landscaping. And there's no mention, as I know it...
Is the floor level going up 1.2 metres?
The floor level in there is going up 1.2 metres, because at the moment, it has a freeboard over the 100-year flood plus climate change allowance of 7 centimetres, 3 inches. Which means that you get out of that house, step into perhaps 2 or 3 inches of water all the way around this unmade lane. That's how we stand at the moment. And that's probably occurred, and no one remarks upon it too much, because it's only one other house affected with this low portion. The houses on the other side to the east are higher, and therefore probably not flooding. This house will be subject to flooding, almost certainly, because the 100-year flood limit is exceeded every 10 or 20 years. So I would say that adding a 1.2 metre height to the floor is going to utterly change the building. Am I right?
Just make one little comment about the lane. Grayshot Surgery, which serves 13,000 people in Hindhead and Grayshot, is also on an unadopted track. If you'd like to contribute towards the £80,000 to resurface this lane, I'd take your money gladly. So forget that. Councillor Frost suggested a deferral for a site visit. Do you have a second? A second?
Because we have heard, sorry, chairman, we have heard from councillor Williamson that it doesn't flood there, the water spills over, that is not the same thing as a flood. Let me assure you.
Thank you. But do you wish to go for...
If people want a site visit, if they have that consent, which is...
And how the proximity of the houses around?
Fine. And you have a second with councillor Williamson, so can we talk to that deferral, or do we move straight to a vote for a site visit? So let's have those in favour of a site visit to this particular site.
One, two, three, four.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
So that motion is lost, so can we continue? Peter Cleveland, I think you want to come in.
Thank you, chairman. There's been a number of comments made, so it's okay if I come back on those now. So, yeah, okay. Firstly, apologies for members for the missing part of the report. Kindly councillor Williamson has picked out those improvements required, so firstly, apologies, the report is not complete. But what we can be clear on is that the condition to this recommendation, condition 5, secures the requirements to increase the finished floor level, and the full mitigation measures set out in the flood risk assessment, sorry, that's on page 32 of your agenda. So the environment agency have looked at it from a safety point of view, and they're satisfied with the additional information, that that is addressed. The point regarding increasing the internal floor space, obviously internally to the building it's a workshop, so it's got a high ceiling, so we think it will be, if you look at that there, by increasing the internal floor level, you could allow for the sufficient ceiling heights as well, so by doing that, that could be provided. In terms of the access and egress, that is via the lane that's suggested is unadopted, but it does also identify a suitable, safe route. And what we do on flood risk access and egress is, we're required to be, or the applicants are required to provide a topography plan showing the height of the entire route, and we then assess that against the height of any floodwater. And that specific route they've identified via that lane does sit above that, so you wouldn't effectively get wet as you moved out, or it wouldn't cause you any harm as well. So you also look at the, if you are walking through water, you'd look at the speed of that water as well, whether it's suitable to wade through, or if it's a certain height and a certain speed, it's not safe to, knocks you off your feet and stuff. But this route would be dry, so adequate access and egress. But this route would be dry, so adequate access and egress can be provided to that. In terms of the concern regarding the screening and the tree cover, condition six, we think, deals with that in detail, it's quite a detailed condition, requiring extent of new types of planting, maintenance, and also picks up on habitat and improvements to that as well. Just checking my notes. In terms of, yeah, the design's already been picked up by councillor Coburn, it is an existing building, it's not the most attractive property as it is, but it's not going to be harmed. And condition eight also prevents additional extensions being added without the control of the council. So if they were to come back with it, we'd be able to consider that because we've removed their permitted development rights, and that would help stay in control of the impact on the character of the area. Hopefully, that picks up all our points. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. councillor Fraser.
I've just read through condition six, and it says the finished floor level is to be set no lower than 65.07 metres above Old Nance Dayton. That is the 1 in 100-year flood level plus climate change. And nowhere does it tell us where the existing floor level is. I only learned from the flood report here that it's 1.2 metres lower down.
councillor Potts.
I wasn't going to discuss flooding or puddles or anything about that. I was just going back actually to condition six, where you talked about the landscaping, because obviously there's a lot of concern from neighbours about, I think what they're trying to get at is they want to be sure that as far as possible, all that screening stays. And I'm not sure that the way that condition six is worded, there's an awful lot in there, but to me, it doesn't really make clear that we want, if we are minded to pass this, we want that also to stay. Or what I'm understanding is the neighbours want that to stay as well. So I think we need to, that needs to be beefed up basically and cover that so that it's far more robust. Thank you.
councillor Leah.
Thank you, Chairman. No, I agree with councillor Potts on that particular item, but no, I was more interested in this floodplain thing, because historically, and sadly, we haven't done very well when we've actually gone against the advice and guidance of these flood risk assessments. And actually, whilst we may not agree with it, every time we go against it, we've lost it, because we aren't the experts on this. And if we're going to pour a minutiae about expertise, advice, then we tend to historically lose. So I share your concerns, however, you know, that's the big issue I have with this. But remove the floodplain and enhance and make it more robust, that condition with regard to keeping the screening. I can't really see another reason not to actually go ahead with it personally. But thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Williamson, did you want to come back?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Really, just to correct my bad memory, as I said, it was a 27-page, 28-page report, which I read this morning. It was 600 millimetres. What they have said is all sleeping accommodation to be located a minimum of 600 millimetres above the 1% figure. So it's, it's not 600 millimetres, it's 300 millimetres for climate change and 300 millimetres for the freeboard. So it's 600 millimetres in total, not 1.2, which I guess you could get within that figure. Yeah.
councillor Coburn.
Can we just have one meeting?
Yeah.
I've just been called councillor Fraser. Oh, yes, no, I was going to back our councillors, Potts and Leah, and I was just looking at condition six. And, you know, in the bullet points, you haven't mentioned existing landscaping at all, have you? So, you know, could we just add a bullet point there? Because it says the scheme should include the following elements. Well, surely it should be protection of important existing landscape or something like that as part of it. Would that sort of fulfil the, because we're talking about new landscaping all the time in those bullet points, and we don't seem to have anything to protect the existing.
Just support the other councillors who've mentioned the experts who've offered their opinion. It's like drainage, it's like sewage, it's, you can't go against the experts, because we are not qualified as such, and therefore we must accept the word of the expert. I really do feel quite strongly about that, otherwise we're on a hiding to nothing. Peter, do you want to come in on condition four, six?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, councillors. Yes, it's an important point on condition six. We feel we'd add an additional bullet point to that if members are happy to agree, which requires a tree retention plan and tree protection, sorry, tree protection during the construction, any construction works. They're not significant, but they will be doing some works internally. So I think that's appropriate to add, and hopefully that picks up on the requirement. The other point to note is the site is a conservation area, so they have to apply to the authority before they do any works to the trees. So we've then got greater control over it as well, so it's not outside the conservation area, if it's not covered by a tree preservation order, it can be cut down. But conservation area, we get to consider it first before it gets taken out. So that's obviously a matter our tree officer can consider and be aware of. Hopefully, that's useful and we can add that point to condition six. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Peter. Members, any last comments or questions before we move on? councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Jim. Just one point. I just looked through the neighbours' objection, because I was wondering why the increased volume of traffic was potentially a problem to them, from such a small residence. And there seems to be a concern that the person who occupies it will use it for business purposes as well as for residential purposes, that's one of the main things in their objection. Is that, can that be forbidden and conditioned against it? It can't be used for business purposes?
We would advise it's not necessary for it not to be used as business purposes, because for most businesses, they would require a separate planning application to change that use. However, if they were working in a home office in the building, that wouldn't require a separate permission, but also that wouldn't cause any disruption to neighbouring properties either. And so we would recommend that a condition isn't necessary.
Thank you. Members, I think it's time to move on to the recommendation. Recommendation is permission be granted, subject conditions one to eight and informant is one to five. And we have the additional bullet point on condition six, tree retention and tree protection on site. So may I have those in favour of granting permission? Please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those against?
Two.
No abstentions, therefore permission is granted. Thank you, members. Moving to item A2, WA 2016 0877. This, as you all know by email, has been deferred, so we will return to this application at a later date. councillor Fraser.
Mr Chairman, are we able to ask you, please, why it's been deferred twice?
We deferred it once here in committee, the second, I'm not sure. Lack of information, I think the email said. Yeah. We're awaiting further information. Is that correct, Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it was deferred from last committee to seek further information from the county council regarding to the wider parking strategy or changes. We're still seeking a fuller understanding of that, and once we've got a full understanding of the zone A parking and how that's moving forward, we will then bring it back to committee. Obviously, it was a request, we tried to bring it back and we were hoping to have that information available, but it wasn't available in time ahead of the committee. So as soon as we have that, we will make it available and bring it back at appropriate time. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, members. That completes our meeting. Thank you very much.